Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this special meeting of the Orange Zoning Board of Appeals on August 25th. My name is David Crowe. I'm the chairman of the Orange Zoning Board of Appeals. To my right, I have Wayne Garrett and Pat Panza. Our zoning enforcement officer, Jack Demersian. We have our recording secretary, Jenny Bowser. Actually, no, she's our secretary. I have our recording secretary, Bonnie Syatt, who very unhelpfully doesn't have a sign in front of her like everybody else. We have our alternate member, Michael Shrockman. I can get his last name correct, but I keep calling him Matt. So hopefully, within the next 10 years, I'll get that right. We have Eric Orzel, who's one of our regular members, and Greg Nanalino, who's our regular member. And our town attorney is Owen Weaver, is with us this evening. This is a special meeting for an appeal. Before we get started, I just want to lay down a few of the ground rules for everybody to understand. We do not, do not make zoning board regulations here. We interpret them. That's what we do. In cases like this appeal, we have a decision by our zoning enforcement officer to do something. And our role here tonight is to determine whether what he did is correct or not. For this game, we have some rules. Everybody needs to know what the rules are, so we're going to tell you upfront. If you wish to speak, this is a public hearing. Everybody will be given an opportunity to speak. Everybody will be given an opportunity to speak. I promise you that. Okay? Everybody cannot talk at once. If you have anything to say, wait till the board or the chair acknowledges you. Come up here and speak from the podium. Okay? When somebody is speaking from the podium, only people at this table will ask them questions. No shouting questions across the room with people. If you continue to shout across the room, either to put information or to ask questions, you will be asked to stop. If you do not stop, you will be asked to leave. If you don't leave, you may have to speak to somebody to help you find the door. Again, if you're going to speak, please speak from the podium. Keep your voice up. Introduce yourself by giving us your name and your address, so that we can record it for the record. And again, I promise you, everyone will be given an opportunity to speak. We have a full board tonight, which means four out of five positive votes will sustain.
Yes.
Okay, or overrule. And we're not dealing with a variance here tonight. So before we get started on this, let me just ask a few questions of Jack, our zoning enforcement officer. Jack, was this appeal filed within 15 days of your decision?
Thirty days.
Thirty days, okay. And it was filed by the aggrieved parties, right?
Correct.
Okay. We have a proper appeal with an A2 survey?
Well, no survey required.
No survey.
We're just reviewing the document issued.
Okay. And notice was mailed to the adjoining?
Not needed for this. Only a variance on that, but all procedure was followed in accordance with town attorney.
Now, we're having this public hearing within 65 days of the application, right?
Correct.
And we're opening the public hearing within 35 days?
Open the public hearing within 65.
Okay.
Close the public hearing within 35. Issue a decision within 65.
This is why I have Jack with me, so I can make sure we get everything right. All right. So let me just start by asking, what kind of district we have here that we're dealing with?
Mr. Chairman, you have to address the adjournment or...
Yeah, we'll get there in a second. What district are we dealing with?
This property is in a residential district.
Okay.
The residential district.
So before we get started tonight, gentlemen, I have a request from Kenneth Zoric, Esquire, who represents the appellant in this matter. It says, "This officer represents the owner of 473 Ridgeview Road, known as the property. An appeal of the decision rendered by Jack Demersian on July 1st, 2025 relating to the use of the property has been noted for a special meeting for the Zoning Board of Appeals on August 25th, 2025. Please be advised that the undersigned and the owners represented are not available to attend the hearing as a result of prior commitments. For that reason, we are requesting that the matter be heard on the next regularly scheduled meeting. Your consideration is appreciated. Signed, Kenneth M. Zoric." So we have what appears to be an application for continuance. Now, my understanding is we have to at least open a public hearing within a certain amount of time here. Is that correct?
We do. We have to open within 65 days. We are not butting up against that number as of yet. But in an effort to have this issue come to a close in a timely manner, we scheduled a special meeting, and that's why we're here tonight.
Okay, along with everybody else. I'm going to ask our counsel about that. What's your feelings on this?
Right, so as Mr. Demersian said, you have to open the public hearing within 65 days. The applicant has a right to seek a continuance. You can't deny that request in terms of, you know, they can make the request. There's no statutory provision that the applicant has to be present, though I'd be remiss if I didn't advise this board that, you know, certain due process rights do attach an applicant, you know, if present, has a right to cross-examine witnesses, put on their own witnesses and documents in support of their position. But again, there's no statutory provision that says they have to be here. So it's within this board's prerogative to vote. It's not the chairman's decision. It's not Jack's decision. It's not my decision to make. It's this board's decision to make whether or not they wish to grant the continuance. You do not have to open the public hearing. You can grant the continuance and open the public hearing at a later date. And you do have a window for that. You're not right up against the 65-day window, so.
All right. What's your experience with this? If you can help me out a little bit?
Right, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Look, if you proceed with the appeal this evening, Jack can put on, you know, his case, so to speak. Public commentary can be received. The appellant or the property owner would have a right to appeal to Superior Court within 30 days after the note publication of the decision. You know, there is a strong possibility that the Superior Court judge would remand the case back for fact-finding, though I don't wear the robe, so I couldn't tell you exactly what he or she would do. But that is a possibility. Or the record could be supplemented at Superior Court, or the court may decide that they can proceed with the record that is developed by this board. So those are your three or four outcomes that are possible.
Am I right that they would have a right to appeal regardless of our decision on the...
Yes.
The motion for continuance? So we could have the public hearing even if they were here, and they could file an appeal? Is that correct?
If you guys roll not in their favor, for sure, they definitely have a right to appeal to Superior Court.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'm on with the floor to discuss this application for a continuance. How long ago did we tell them about this hearing, Jack? It's not like this just came up, right?
The notice is two weeks' notice, so they've been aware of this for probably a little over two weeks.
Okay, and I don't see them waving anything in case we run up against the 65 days, do you?
I don't.
Gentlemen? Anybody? Go ahead, Wayne.
Do they have representation here this evening?
I don't think so. Their attorney and the appellant are not here. Pat?
Well, I think it would be prudent to continue it, in my opinion.
Anybody else? Any discussion? Eric, you have anything you want to add? I'm going to say I'm inclined to go ahead tonight. Go ahead. Go ahead, Wayne. You are, Greg?
Yep.
You know, they have the right to take an appeal regardless. The public is all here. I think it might be good to push this down the track. If we were to render a decision this evening, then we would have at least a panoply of legal options that don't exist at this time, meaning possibly injunctions or... Go ahead, Wayne.
I was just going to say that I agree with the chair.
Any other comments, gentlemen? All right, so with that, I'm going to have Jenny, if you'd call the roll, and we're going to vote on this... Actually, I need a motion, don't I? I need a motion to deny the continuance request. Anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
I have a second from Greg Nanalino. Jen, call the roll.
Sure. Commissioner Garrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Panza?
No, Mike will not be a willing member because it will be a full...
Commissioner Orzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Nanalino?
Yes.
And Chairman Crowe?
Yes. Just to clarify, yes is the confirmation of the motion to deny the continuance and continue the public hearing. So with that said, first order of business to have Jack, correct?
We do actually have the review of last meeting's minutes before we get into it. If we could just...
I was going to say that for...
Do that for housekeeping.
I was going to say that for old business, but as long as keeping everybody up late.
It appears first on the agenda.
Okay. So, gentlemen, if you had the opportunity to review the minutes of the last meeting? See a lot of shaking heads. Then I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Make a motion to accept as stated.
Need a second? You got a second from Wayne? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, now we can get to the good stuff.
Mr. Chairman, you should open the public hearing. Then Jack can proceed.
At this point, I'm going to open the public hearing with regards to... Let me get out my legal notice here. I want to read this into the record. All right. Notice is hereby given that the Orange Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a special meeting on Monday, August 25th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. at the Orange Town Hall, 617 Orange Center Road, to conduct a public hearing on the following. Edition number 1842 submitted by CLSE Holdings III LLC for property known as 473 Ridgeview Road. An appeal of the decision of the zoning enforcement officer has been submitted. Application materials are on file in the Orange Zoning Office. A copy of this notice has been filed with the Orange Town Clerk dated Orange, Connecticut, this 11th day of August 2025. Dave Crowe, Chairman, Orange Zoning Board of Appeals. So with that, I'd like to call our zoning enforcement officer, Jack Demersian. Jack, just introduce yourself.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Jack Demersian, zoning enforcement official for the town of Orange. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. As I'm sure we all know, we are here to discuss a violation order issued for 473 Ridgeview Road. An appeal has been filed of my decision to issue a violation here. This initially came to my attention on June 29th, when I received an email from a resident asking about the regulations that we current have in place for short-term rentals, Airbnb's, bed and breakfasts, things of that nature. Pointed out the subject property to me, and then upon investigation and stopping by the property, it was clear that this property was being used as a bed and breakfast Airbnb. So I issued a violation on July 1st, which the appellant then appealed within 30 days of that order. The reason I issued this order is because in Orange, we have a regulation, our regulations state 383-19 that any use in any of our zoning districts that are not specifically listed as permissible are prohibited. Airbnb's, bed and breakfasts, Verbo, things of that nature, none of them are listed in Article III of our zoning regulations, which is the residential district, therefore are prohibited by Section 383-19. So that order was issued upon further investigation and looking into the holding company that is the property owner here. The principles of the property and any address associated with the property owners that I had access to, so with the information available to me, none of those addresses were in Orange. So it's clear to me that based on the information available, this is a not owner-occupied property, and certainly at times, based on testimony from residents that I received since issuing this order, being rented to well more than four people. Now, owner-occupied and four occupants are residential regulations, which is part of Article III of our zoning regulations. So issuing this order, I issued a violation of Article III saying that, again, you do not meet the use standards here. These are not permissible uses, so are inherently prohibited. You are, after investigation, seeing that it is not owner-occupied, so they are not meeting any of the parameters for rental in that zone. And they are also, at times, most of the time, seeming to be renting to more than four people. So with all of this taken into account, it seems clear to me that this is an order that should be upheld by the Zoning Board of Appeals. I know in my order, I list bed and breakfast. That is an order that I have used in the past, when I've dealt with maybe one Airbnb in the past four or five years. There was no issue with that wording. If the board feels they want to narrow down the violation letter to specifically an Airbnb or, you know, something like that, I think that would be perfectly within the board's rights to accept, deny, or modify the order of the zoning enforcement official, which are your options tonight. Let's see. So like I said, we had a listing online. Also, just for the record, this is a two-bedroom home on the assessor's card. It is being listed as a six-bedroom home that sleeps 16-plus guests. The reason we have limitations on bedrooms is because Orange is serviced by septic. There was no six-bedroom septic system put in here. There was a lot of work done inside after looking at the listing that clearly was not approved by the Fire Marshal's Office, the Building Department, and like I said, septic-wise, Health Department is definitely, you know, not up to speed on this house. So with all of that being said, and the information available to me being laid out, again, I believe that this order should be upheld, that this property owner is currently using this property for a non-permissible use in the residential zone, and should be asked to cease immediately. If anybody has any additional questions for me, I think that was about all I had.
Jack, could you just tell the board what the reason for the appeal is? What their reason for appeal is?
Sure. Their reason is they believe that a bed and breakfast, or one that they are not operating, a bed and breakfast, which is somebody in the property, you know, cooking breakfast for the people, the tenants that are staying here? That I can't answer. But citing Article III as a whole, which is the residential district, if the board were to try to narrow down that definition, then I would believe, you know, that's perfectly within your rights to do so as a board.
So just to clarify, their defense is, no, we're not operating a bed and breakfast? Is that...
That seems to be their defense. Based on the information available to me, yes.
Okay. Now, I see in our package here, there is an online business search for the owner, which is CLSE Holdings III LLC.
Correct.
That shows that this is, in fact, a business, correct?
That's correct.
And that is the true owner of the property. It's not an individual that owns it.
That's correct.
So as far as you know, they're not living there?
That's right. As far as I know, it is owned by a business, not a single individual. And as you could see from the paperwork, there is no information in that business lookup that says any of the principles or any of the names associated with this business have a residence or working address in Orange. So I believe that's important to note, proving that it is certainly not owner-occupied.
All right. Now, go ahead, Pat.
By any chance, did the... Looking into as far as the septic system and stuff of that sort, did you get any information on that? What size is existing?
It's a two-bedroom tank.
So it's probably under a thousand-gallon tank?
I would assume so.
And if they had 16 people, they would have to have five times what they have there now.
Better question for the Health Department, but after speaking with them repeatedly about this, they have assured me that this is a fairly sizable issue for their department.
Well, I also want to clarify that point, Jack. You've got building and the Fire Marshal and...
That's correct. They... I know they are in the, you know, process of drafting their own violations to be issued to this owner. I let them know that they may want to kind of see the results of this appeal before they end up doing that. But all the applicable departments are well aware of this issue.
All right, but we're not dealing with any of that.
Right. We're not here to discuss health issues or building issues. We are here just for the purposes of this violation.
I just wanted to clarify that what the size was and what, you know, did they do any work on the septic system or any of that type of thing?
The only work that I'm aware of on this property has been unpermitted.
Oh.
So. If they did, we certainly don't know about it.
Jack, I heard you refer to Article III of our regulations. I assume that's regarding residential districts?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
And the very first thing in Article III is Section 383-26 permitted uses, correct?
Correct.
All right. And it's your position that none of the permitted uses that are listed for an R1 zone are occurring here on this property anymore?
That's correct.
So if they were to try to say, well, we've got a single-family residence on it, our regulations define what a family is, don't they?
I believe that they do. And it also says cannot be rented in that same section to more than four people at a time.
That's the residential rule.
The residential rules. And that's with the owner living in the same dwelling that is being rented.
Okay. And we also have, in the next section, a list of permitted uses, special permit uses.
Special uses, yes.
It doesn't mean any one of those?
Correct, does not.
Okay. So what we have here is the equivalent of somebody put up a single-family residence, and they're running automobile repair garage.
It's a commercial operation.
Or nail salon or something like that. It's a commercial operation.
I read it the same way. Yes, sir.
And would it be fair to characterize your cease and desist as cease and desist your commercial operations there?
That's correct.
Regardless of... Look, I don't know what it is either, but I know what it ain't.
Right. And in that notice that the property owner received was a copy of the listing clearly showing that this is what we are having an issue with, is this action. And also was a copy of Article III of the zoning regulations. So if they had any confusion based on that, they have everything in front of them to fully understand what the order was getting at.
They're charged with notice of that, whether or not you send them a cease and desist, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead, Wayne.
Jack, this may not be germane at the moment, but do you know how many square feet the houses?
Believe the assessor's... Not including... If I'm remembering right, it was a hair over 1,700.
So I'm sure the building official and the Fire Marshal are the bestest, but occupancy for residential use is one occupant or 200 square feet, just so everybody knows. So if there are 16 people there, and the house is in 3,200 square feet...
Which it's not.
Then there's an occupancy question as well.
Turn on your mic.
Sorry, Wayne.
I thought it was on, sorry.
Too many bikes.
There's an occupancy question as well, based on the building and fire code.
I would agree, yes.
Go ahead, Pat.
Even with the basement, which is, we know, has not been permitted, they still don't meet the requirement.
To the best of my knowledge, just about nothing here meets any requirements. Yes, sir.
But even to meet that requirement, they would have to have somebody living there, correct?
Correct. It would have to be owner-occupied.
Right. So there's going to be owner-occupied, and then you can have up to four people in a rooming house, so they can't qualify as a rooming house.
That's correct.
Permitted uses. Go ahead, Mike.
They haven't stopped.
Mike, could you move it?
They haven't stopped either, correct?
Not to my knowledge, no. The listing is still active. In fact, I received a phone call from somebody today who...
I was by there today, and there's four or five garbage cans out front, so...
Yeah, oh, yeah. It's absolutely, to the best of my knowledge, still being used. The listing is definitely still active. I have it pulled up. I even got a call from somebody today who said, "I just booked this for halfway through September, and I just heard about all this, you know, about this property." So it's certainly still being advertised and utilized, yes.
Jack, I just want to clarify. Section 383-14 definitions talks about a family. As a group of related persons plus guests and domestic servants, or no more than six people, unrelated, living as a single household unit. We don't have any of that going on, do we, here?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. Rumor and a border are not part of family under that definition, correct? Now, I heard something about a noise complaint. Was that the case?
The complaints that initially brought this to my attention, you know, noise, unruly behavior, the amount of cars being kept on the property. I know the police have been called to this property since this has become active several times. As far as zoning goes, you know, of course, the noise ordinance is enforced, the Police Department or who you call on that. We don't have a rule for the number of cars that could be on a property, so that's not necessarily a zoning violation. But that's the activity that, you know, clearly drew attention here to have us discover, you know, the use problems that exist today.
We do have performance standards under 383-163. Specifically, in 383-165, it deals with noise. It says, "No noise shall be transmitted outside the lot where it originates, and the noise has a sound level intermittent or beat frequency which would endanger the public health and safety, or impair the safety or value of the reasonable use of any of those other units." Is that correct? We have that performance standard as well?
That is correct, yes.
So they could be potentially in violation of that.
Absolutely, yeah. I think the people who live in that area might be best to speak on that, but I would certainly agree with you, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Jack? Go ahead, Eric.
Bottom line is, the building's being used as a commercial building to generate money on a monthly, weekly, day-by-day basis from strangers, just like a hotel.
That's my understanding of it, yes.
So at the bottom line, they're making money off this thing. It becomes a commercial property, or utilized as a commercial property, which is a residential zone, which is allowed.
It's a no-no.
So, bottom line?
Yes, sir.
So that we're actually clear on everything. The septic system, to our best of our knowledge, does not meet the criteria that they have there.
That's correct.
The basement, which is finished, has not been permitted.
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Okay. Thirdly, the number of people there, it's been affirmed that it's more than four people that are in this building.
Can confirm, yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct. I know the... A few weeks ago, the Fire Department was called there for a gas leak. And in speaking with them, they confirmed that there was between eight and 10 residents, I believe, is what they found.
All right. Any other questions for Jack? Go ahead, Eric.
So you're like, if like a structure isn't habitable or whatever, a town could condemn a property, right?
Sure, if a...
If it's unsafe.
Yeah, if deemed unsafe or a threat to public health and safety, yeah, absolutely.
So what is that process? And was it ever thought about going down that road?
It's more so for the building department. You know, if they... If somebody's living in a house that has a caving-in roof and is, you know, an immediate threat to them, the building department can, you know, red-tag the door.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
Right.
Because this whole thing sounds...
Zoning does not have, you know, I can't go on a property and padlock a door.
Right.
You know, there's due process for zoning when something is not an immediate threat to public health and safety, which I completely agree that this is a nuisance and is not allowed in any capacity by our regulations. But is it an immediate threat to public health and safety where the building department would go there and, you know, prevent access?
Well, how about the people that are actually occupying the house? So if 16 people are in there, if there's, you know, I don't know, building code, at what point they have to install a sprinkler system, et cetera, et cetera?
That's a good question.
So at that point, can they just condemn it, shut it down? You know, the septic system's going to turn into like a fertilizer system.
Right, yeah, that's a good question. I know that the building and Health... Yeah, I know the building and Health Department can take certain action, you know, just based on the listing. You know, the listing online gives these departments a lot of information that they would need in order to do, you know, not an inspection of the property, but give us reasonable evidence to say, hey, there are problems here. So the building department, the Health Department, and the Fire Marshal's Department are all well aware of this, and whether or not, you know, they're going to be... I can't speak to their departments. I can't say on what action they're going to take. But they are aware, and based on my discussion with them, there are violations for each of those departments here as well.
Any other questions for Jack? With that, Jack, thank you. I'm going to have you sit down.
Thank you very much.
Okay, in keeping with protocol here, is there anybody here on behalf? Or is the petitioner themselves, the appellant themselves, here? No? Okay. So I proceed to let the public speak. With that, I'm going to ask that anybody who wants to speak in favor of the appeal, meaning in favor of the appellant, the owners... Should I go there first?
Sure, yeah.
If, if there are any of those people, if they want to speak on behalf of the appellant, please come now. Anybody? No takers, all right. Well, then, we'll start the line for anybody who wants to speak against the appeal. Okay, does anybody want to come up here and speak against the appeal? No takers, there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of faces here tonight, but nobody wants to talk, okay. With that, then I guess we can close the public hearing?
We didn't understand what you just said.
You didn't understand what I just said. What I'm saying is that if you want to speak against the appellant, the owners, now would be the time, okay?
Come on up.
Okay, we'll start with this gentleman, and then I believe this lady wants to speak next, we'll start just queuing up. Go ahead. Just introduce yourself to the board with your name and address, please.
Mark Maturo, four-twelve Clark Lane.
Can you please spell your last name?
M-A-T-U-R-O. So I have a cost drop. I just figured, I just figured I'd come up here and give myself as a resident to give the numbers, so I figured if you're gonna tally how many people come up here, for either for or against, I would just be one of the individuals that comes up here.
Let me assure you that the evidence presented to us tonight will...
Oh, no, I understand that.
Not, not the numbers.
So I also, I also spoke at the first selectman's meeting, which is the first time I ever spoke at a public forum of any kind.
Well, I'm happy to be number two.
Well, thank you. So, so for those of you that weren't there, I just want to say that my wife and I moved to town about three years ago, she comes from an even nicer, sleepier, well, maybe not nicer, but sleepier town called Monroe.
Yeah, I'm kinda partial to Orange.
Fun Row. I come from New Haven, and I come from a pretty terrible part of New Haven, at least when I was growing up. So like I said in the meeting last time, Orange to me is kind of a paradise, and I think that we need to be a little heavy-handed to kinda keep it a paradise. I don't think there's anything wrong with short-term rentals, per se, you know, if you're renting three months to a room to a traveling nurse, but we don't, like I said in the other meeting, we don't really live in a high-trust society anymore, so we can't trust people to make their own barriers, so unfortunately, I guess we gotta make barriers for them. I also, if you're not familiar where Clark Lane is, I'm in the B-line of Ridgeview, so that means if one of these occupants decides to make a late-night alcohol run, and they miss the stop sign at the end of Ridgeview, they're gonna end up in my daughter's bedroom, so I'm a little partial to that too, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did you have some? Just remember to please introduce yourself to the board by your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Stacy DeRiquiza, I'm sorry, I've got a little bit of laryngitis, will I spell my last name? Yes.
Yes, please.
It's D-E-U-R-Q-U-I-Z, like zebra, A like apple, and I am the person who lives directly across the street from this hotel, and I have painstakingly, and probably much to many people's departments in this town, wanna stop hearing from me, much like I wanna stop being the person who has to report it. I had written something else because I didn't realize the order of what was gonna happen here today, so I just wanted to start by thanking the board for denying this and not kicking the can down the road, whether it's my weekly phone calls that I have to make to the public works department, whether it's me sweeping glass that's in the street, I have put new tires on my car, new tires on my children's car, I've spent thousands of dollars installing a security system after we had drunk men come over and say very sexually inappropriate things to my school-aged children, I have the police department at my house at four in the morning, I have the police department at my house at ten at night, I have the fire department, through no doing of their own, at my house because it's a neglected property and the people who live there have to call, we come home to find our mailbox blocked from the excessive cars that are there, we don't get mail because of it, and it has just been untenable for us to live there, it really is a hotel. Jack touched on a bunch, bunch of things, but I just wanted to say that as of now, in four days, we have two-hundred-and-fifty, a little more by the time the meeting happened, unique Orange property owners who have all signed and opposed short-term rentals. I know that there was some chatter at the selectman's meeting about the language needing to be tightened up, and I was really happy with how thorough Jack was today, so I just wanted to publicly come out and say thank you for that.
Do you have any questions for this witness?
I'm sorry, ma'am, could you just put on, could you just put on the record your address?
Sure, four-seventy Ridgeview Road.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, one last thing, I did just want to add that the people who own the home wrote to me, and I brought a copy of it for everybody, which I'm happy to give you if I'm allowed to, and I did post it on social media, so probably a lot of people are following me for that, but she wrote that they only bought the home because she has cancer, and she was using the pool for therapeutic purposes Monday through Friday, and then when I pointed out to her that I live across the road and I had photoed all of it, that, that is not the situation at all, I've also had the benefit of being in the house, in the basement that you're speaking of is what has been chopped into the four extra bedrooms, and if I had somebody that was a first responder in my family, and, you know, I certainly wouldn't want them going into a space that didn't have window egresses, or to Mr. Orzal's point, fire sprinklers, or something to keep them safe, it seems like you would just be trying to rescue somebody out of a burning shoebox.
Do you have copies of that, Larry?
I sure do. I didn't know how many of you there would be, so there's six copies.
I was gonna say, if you guys wanna come, we just need to make sure we keep a copy for... That's fine, we got one here.
Now, why don't you come back up and have to just walk us through what it is you have here? I've noticed that...
Ma'am, if you could just identify each page, what it is, just so the records...
Sure, the first page is the listing on Airbnb, which, as Jack stated, is still up today, that happens to be a copy that I printed from the internet today. I as well have made a video, which I'm happy to show the board of myself renting the home for a week in December, and my credit card transaction went through, I subsequently canceled it, but I made a video just to prove that they were lying after their meeting with Jim, and then these next pages are my interaction that I had with the homeowner through the Airbnb portal, her name is Shayna, and her property manager's name is Nellie, and this goes through explaining what they've done in their mind so that the Airbnb would be safe, and then she talks about having cancer, and that's why she uses the pool, and then she begs me not to turn her into the town, it's long and extensive, and that's really the highlight of it.
And ma'am, that's two pages, that, that last section you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, just, I just want the record to be clear.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That's interesting.
Go on once. This lady, and I think there's a lady in the back there to my left. Go ahead. Just remember to introduce yourself by your name and your zip code.
Larissa Persano, six-three-seven South Greenbrier Drive. P-E-R-S-A-N-O. Thank you. So I just have to say that I'm not on social media, I don't know Stacy, I don't live in the neighborhood, however, this town talks, and it's talking a lot about this issue, and it is concerning, I think everybody has an opinion of everyone's person or character, however, it's interesting that there are six properties that this company owns, and there's one that's listed on Airbnb, and they claim they're not bed and breakfast, but that's what Airbnb stands for. The one thing that people do say, and they're talking about, is this could very well happen in anybody's neighborhood, especially with someone that has a pool, or they wanna put a pool in, or even just, I mean, my neighborhood's great, we know all of our neighbors, everybody watches out for each other. The reason why I'm here is 'cause this is, we can't let bigger associations or corporations take over this town that is very well-known for being peaceful, tranquil, and when you look at it, Airbnb description, that's exactly what it says, but that's not what it's turning out to be, and if there's one person complaining, it's just a matter of time before more people start complaining, more people are affected, that's why I came, and I just wanted to make that statement that I don't, I don't even live there, I don't even know, but it is concerning because if it's allowed for one person, then we're just gonna be taken advantage of. I grew up in West Haven, I thought it was great, but it's happening in my parents' neighborhood, I mean, just flooded with corporations buying up houses and selling them and flipping them over, and parties galore, trash galore, and there's no stopping it, and then you have the squatters, don't even get me started there, the students around the university leave for the summer, people come and squat, then they leave again, that's not something that would, I would ever want to see in Orange, and there's a lot of spaces here, there's a lot of land that you don't necessarily know what's going on in these homes, so if you have one person here who has a concern, it's only a matter of time that it just spreads like a virus, and I just wanted to thank you for bringing it to our attention, thank you.
Just a moment, anybody have any questions for this witness? No?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just make sure you introduce yourself to the board by your name and your address, please.
Anna Dolan, six-zero-one Arrowhead Drive, Orange, Connecticut, oh-six-four-seven-seven. I am the owner of, well, over the course of twenty years, three VRBOs, which have also been Airbnbs, I have never, ever heard of such an outrageous story as this, it is totally incomprehensible, I, through the course of these years, I have hosted nobody, only, only the best that our society has to offer, Yale graduation, families who came into town who lost their sister, so they had to go to a funeral, another daughter who brought her mother over, who was an elderly woman, couldn't walk, they wanted to find a beautiful place to be, weddings, people come into town, they're going to a wedding somewhere else, but they're using the house to get the party ready, these are all happy occasions, other families whose the father has come back from being overseas for many years, if somebody is, is passing away soon, so they wanted a place where they could meet and just visit for one last time. I mean, I can go on and on and on, I mean, I've had multiple, I have another place out in California, never, ever, ever have I ever had any problems, so for this to happen is I just, is laughable, I mean, it can't possibly be true, because I've only had the best, and I'm a person who owns the house, but I also rent it out, but I don't, I'm not there when I rent it out, because if I am there, I spoil the whole thing, it just ruins the whole karma of the situation, but I'm careful about who comes, I limited the numbers, absolutely no parties, it's totally forbidden, and I have other very strict regulations, but I also have to say that I have a unique property that I like sharing with people who come in to rent, and I think that in a lot of ways, if people are very careful and monitor very carefully, have strict house rules, I mean, and if neighbors are complaining, my neighbors don't complain, I mean, they don't even know somebody, some, no, they do know that, that somebody's there, but of course, if there was a problem, they would notify me, and that would be it, I have never, ever, ever, and this has been over the course of about twenty years, so I don't know whether, I mean, at this point, I think the, the gist of this whole conversation is that, well, let's forbid all kinds of short-term rentals, and that I don't believe, because I think it has, most, all, most of the ones, the only experience I've had is families who are, who want to have a nice time, they're looking for a quiet place, they're looking for a beautiful situation, this town is, I think would be, would benefit from it, but again, it has to be very carefully monitored by the homeowners, I know of other people who years ago would rent out their houses when they, when they went away, so I, I think my, my request is that, and also, the, being able to limit, having to limit the number of occupants to four is totally real, unrealistic, what happens if you have a family with four children? They can't, they can't use the house? I mean, really, so I mean, you, you have to be reasonable about how you choose and what you're gonna do, but I do think that it can be very beneficial for the town, because it brings in a lot of good people who, you know, as their children grow, oh, I've been to this town, oh, I've been to the carnival, I remember this, I remember that, the concerts that they have on the green, you know, so that's my request, is that you, you keep your minds open when the time comes for a potential Airbnb request, not Airbnb, I'm not a big fan of Airbnb, VRBO is, I think is more, is better, Airbnb doesn't, Airbnb does not monitor, monitor the person who's renting well enough, they don't even give you, they don't even give you their, well, I shouldn't say that, I'm not gonna say that, but anyway, so that's what I have to say.
Any questions for this witness? Go ahead.
You have properties in Orange right now that you use as an Airbnb?
One, but it was years ago, well, I can't tell you, I, I don't think, I think I'll get, I can't tell you how it happened, but as far as I was concerned, it was, it was acceptable at that time, and it has been up until now.
Are you still operate it now?
No, I stopped a year ago.
Oh, okay.
But now, I, now I am renting it to, to students, I have a UNH student who is a cybersecurity major, he's a senior, this is my first time doing this, I've never done it before, I have interviewed students before, but I didn't feel comfortable, but this young man is mature, he is very pleasant, very respectful, he's great, and I've had another inquiry, I've had inquiries, this is more, this is University of New Haven, so you have a lot of international students?
I'm just gonna interrupt you here, we're gonna try to stay focused on this appeal.
That's fine.
We don't want you up here justifying.
Okay, but I just, somebody mentioned students in the audience.
I heard your point.
Okay.
We're gonna go, go ahead, Eric, you got something you wanna say?
Just curious, where, where are your other short-term rentals?
Well, one was in Branford, but it's no longer used as rental, and it was our second home, and...
Why aren't the others... Yeah, where was the other one, California, you said?
Yeah, in Dana Point, it was a, it was a property that I purchased back in nineteen eighty-three, and I still have it today, and I go out there three and four times a year, I monitor it very carefully, I have a ring doorbell, and the thing is, and cameras, and I have...
What kind of town is it, is it like an orange?
It's a resort town, no, no, it's a resort town, it's, okay, it's just south of Laguna Beach.
Let, let, we're gonna stay focused on this.
That's fine, I'm answering questions.
No, I just curious.
Okay, all right, any more questions? Could be rejected, I mean, it's outrageous.
Yeah, now, now they'll use, go ahead, I'll get you next.
Hi, my name is Kim Makita, five-thirty-one Lambert, I've met some of you, you know, I just wanna, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I would just, M-I-K-I-T-A. Thank you. I just really hope that we stick to the facts, this is overcapacity for both the house, the, the amount of people in the house, the septic system, the neighbors do not appreciate it, we do not want these people here, we do not want this business here, I don't care if the woman has cancer, so sorry if that's true, it doesn't, it's not relevant, it's, that doesn't go into the zoning enforcement that we're talking about here, I don't care who's coming for a wedding, it does not matter, so I really hope that everyone stays on topic, stays focused on what we are talking about here, because we have all had properties, I'm sure all of us have properties in Orange, we've all wanted to do things with our owner-occupied properties that maybe regulations have not permitted us to do, and we felt it was unfair, or it really sucked, or whatever it was, and we listened, and we didn't disobey the regulations because we are not special, we all matter, it's all for the greater good, so these people are not special, let's just stay to it, right? That's all I'm hoping for, okay, sorry.
Just a second, anybody have any questions for this witness? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I had one more, come on. It always starts like this, few people won't go, it's like a bunch of...
Coming back.
All shoving on the edge.
Larissa Persano, again, what I wanted to clarify is, when I'm talking about students, where I grew up, where I was living, even as an adult, my personal experience is very similar to Stacy's, when you live across the street, when you have houses on either side, and it's party time, and it's one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, cars are speeding, nobody wants to hit Mark's house, speeding cars, what I'm saying is that short-term rentals, for whatever reason, it, you have to respect the residents, that's just being an adult, and this right here, whatever's happening in Orange...
And this right here, whatever's happening in Orange, it shouldn't happen. It shouldn't happen to this town. And it would be a very... It would be a shame if the partying just continues. And that's all I just wanted to clarify. I've had personal experience, so I know exactly what Stacy's experiencing. That's all I wanted to say.
Just a minute. Any questions for this witness? None?
No, thank you again.
All right, I had two. I'm going to start... I think the woman in the green, you haven't spoken yet, right? Your turn.
Hi, I'm Sheila Millay, M.I.L.L.E.A., 1003 Rainbow Trail. I'm interested to know if the taxing of Airbnb or short-term rental is different from a residential tax.
The answer to that is I don't know, and we don't deal with that.
We don't deal with that.
We're here just on the whether or not they're using their property in compliance with the zoning record.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Wait just a second. Any questions for this witness, while she's there?
No, you're good.
All right, anybody else? Yes, sir. Just remember to introduce yourself by your name and your address, please.
So I'm not a good public speaker.
Sorry.
That's all right. My name's Christopher Miklus. I live at 308 Fairleigh Road.
Just go your last name, please.
Sure. M, as in Milford. I.C.K.L.U.S.
Thank you.
I totally sympathize with this lady, you know. I definitely think that the law for short-term rentals needs to be tightened up. We don't need this happening in Orange. We don't need businesses coming in, taking over homes, running Airbnbs, VRBOs, whatever. I sympathize with her because next door to me is a rental, and it's a long-term rental, from what I know. It appears to change on a yearly basis. That gentleman owns six homes in Orange, okay? Some of them are not very aesthetically pleasing. Thankfully, across the street from me just sold. Different story, thank God. That worked out, even though it's in an LLC. It did work out. It just blows my mind... I work in healthcare, so I know a little bit about, you know, fire codes, occupancies, all that. It blows my mind how, you know, I know there's a whole legality behind this, but how the building department, fire department can't go in there and just shut it down like that. No sprinklers, overcapacity, septic, square footage. Does that even include the pool area? I mean, I know it's not living space, you know? The basement has people living in it. It's not acquired as real living space if it was all constructed illegally. So this is... This is really concerning to me, and, you know, I hope it gets taken care of, and very fast. All right? Thank you.
Any questions for this witness?
Thank you. Thank you.
Going once. Going twice. Okay. At this moment, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I actually have one additional thing, so I...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, no. Totally fine. I have four or five total letters that were mailed to me. Four of them very strongly in opposition of this appeal. One of them fairly in the middle. I don't know if you want to just enter these into the record. I don't think we have to read through them, everyone, but just so you are aware.
I think everybody noticed they were in their package, correspondence to the board.
Yes.
We're just going to enter those as part of the record. We can do that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to enter these as part of the record. We'll make them public hearing, um...
Two.
Two?
Altogether, two.
Yeah. It's one package. Now, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion by Pat and a second by Wayne. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, gentlemen. I've looked at the regs. I don't see any permitted use, either special or otherwise, that allows this particular corporate entity to use this property as they're using it for a commercial enterprise. I'd entertain... Anybody else got anything to say about that? Pat?
Yeah, well, to your point, I think there... The square footage is well under the allowable. The basement, it's clearly has not been permitted. Thirdly, that the number of people and causing... And I guess there's history there with the police department and other agencies on this particular property. So this is a matter of... We are looking at this. Jack made the correct, you know, decision as far as that. I would say that he's all within line of his duties to do for the town of Orange. And we... This is not an acceptable application of the residential area.
Wayne?
I don't think the building, fire, or health is the consideration, though it's down the road a consideration. I think right at hand today is whether or not Jack's order, his cease and desist order, is consistent with the regulations. And since, as you mentioned, this is not a permitted use, I feel that Jack's presentation, his summary, is consistent with our regulations, and I would not be in favor of approving this request.
Mike? Eric?
I agree with Wayne, you know, on the same page. I do have a question. Can I ask the attorney a question? Yeah. So if you... If they come back and we modified the verbiage for the bed and bath... Bed and breakfast, I'm sorry. Can that be countered again, or...
Right. Great question. So this board has jurisdiction to hear appeals. You have the ability, under the statutes, to approve, deny, or modify a zoning officer's decision. This is a de novo review of the case, meaning you step into the shoes of the zoning officer, and you have to make a determination based on the fact-finding, whether or not the facts, you know, how they apply to pertinent zoning regulations. So you could take the facts that you heard here tonight. You can take your knowledge of the zoning regs, and you can... Again, you can accept, or you can just approve his order. You can deny his order or modify it. And then they have a right to appeal to Superior Court. You also have a right to modify the terms. You could give them a reasonable time to come into compliance should you decide to modify the order. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Thank you. Please, thank you.
Anything else, Mike, or you? I just enjoy the fact I'm getting your name right. Only took three times. Eric, you got anything?
No, I was going to say, 100% agree with Jack and his decision, and what he went over there, and what your findings were. And they're running as a business and using the property as a hotel, and it's not a hotel, then it's bottom line.
Great.
I agree with Jack's decision. I also agree with Pat and Wayne's comments.
I think the only thing I'd like to add is maybe we should modify the order a little bit, gentlemen, in that to maybe back it up to 30,000-foot level and say they're running a commercial enterprise over there, which is not permitted under our regs.
That's correct.
That they are not... There's no use permitted for an R1 zone that they're using over there, or that they're meeting over there, and that they may... And we will... That they... I'm concerned about the noise element that I raised. I think we may want to address that at some point. I don't know that we can do that now. Could we? No? You don't think so?
I mean, Jack's order cites the Article III, so...
Okay, so we'll stick with Article III.
I haven't memorized it, but unless there's noise portions in there, I mean...
No, it's in Article 11. So we're going to start with... I think... I think we'll... The only change we'll make is we'll modify Jack's order to say there to cease and desist all unpermitted activity. Would that be a way to say? How would... I don't know, we need to help...
Mr. Chairman, is your suggestion based on the evidence that this board received tonight in terms of the Airbnb listing and the testimony by Mr. Demersian and the testimony of the public with respect to the... How title is held and who is occupying the property?
Yeah, I think based on the evidence we've heard...
Right.
That you just cited, and you said it better than I could, so I'm not going to repeat it.
Right.
That's why I have him here. That based on that, we should modify the order to... Go ahead, Pat. You want to take a stab at it?
I think you should also premise that this property is not occupied by the owner of the property. And the way the regulation states that they are supposed to be occupying it with four people that are not related. That's not the case there. So it's clear that they're running a business not for the, you know, being a residential, and it's in a residential zone. So whether it be an Airbnb or VRBO, it all complies to the same.
See, I don't want to get that fine with it. I think I'd rather just tell them cease and desist all commercial operations there because they are a commercial entity, and they are... Because if we get narrowed down to one specific part of the...
Well, isn't it clear under 383?
At 383, there's no specific use, and I think that would we'd stick with.
So...
The other thing I'd like to discuss is enforcement time. We have the right, and I believe this is true, to come up with a timeframe which they have to come into compliance.
Right. You could provide the owner with a period of time to come into compliance with a modified order. Yes.
Now, they've already been put on notice by the cease and desist, so I don't think we have to give them much time. But I'd say we give them 10 more days to come into compliance, and if they don't, then the legal... The legal ramifications, whatever those be, can be visited upon them. Go ahead, Pat.
The problem with that, they got other people coming in.
Okay.
You know, I know who cares. I'm just saying, at the end of the day, you know, if they got 10 days, you know, they're either going to have the people come there or give them the money back. That's all I'm saying.
So you want to cut it down?
Or they don't...
Jack, this is deliberations.
Yeah, this is deliberations. Do you want to cut that time down?
So, you know, and again, we all care. I mean, I understand that, Wayne. But at the end of the day, I think we should cut down the amount of days. They've already been given notice. I think we should cut it down.
You say immediate compliance, then?
Immediate compliance.
Anybody... Anybody have any more discussion on that point? Go ahead, Wayne.
Actually, even though I'm not concerned about their future visitors or their business model here, I was actually going to say that either somewhere between your suggestion of 10 to even 14 days to come into compliance. There's a holiday weekend coming up and other things, and I think this board, we've all been very, very fair, as long as I've served on this board, and I would tend to agree with your stipulation of 10 days, and I would even entertain a couple more days. But I think that... I think the regulations are clear, and I think Jack's actions have been precisely according to his charge.
Okay. Jack, you gave them 30 days to come into compliance with your...
Mr. Chairman, deliberations you can't ask Jack.
Go ahead.
Again, I understand your position on this whole situation. If the... If Jack has already issued a cease and desist, that is your notice. Giving him more notice really is not going to make a difference either way. They haven't complied yet. So my point is, you know what? Let's cut right to the chase. Cut it off now. Let them come back. If they're going to appeal, let them come back, but in the meantime, you stop them now. That's...
I agree with Pat. I think the cease and desist order speaks for itself.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my thing.
I'm easy. With that, I'd entertain a motion.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
I have a quick question. What's... You give them zero days. What actually stops them?
They... Well, while this appeal's pending, it... The appeal itself, under the statute, stays any enforcement action. They have 30 days to appeal to Superior Court.